Hi.
Hey.
Hey, Brandon.
Hello. The meeting notes in chat. So there's a couple of changes we made to the the weekly meeting kind of template and stuff like that. So let's see a little bit of that. One thing that we're trying to get folks to do more is to put in the affiliation. When you're writing in your name and the meeting notes. This is helpful, you know, if folks want to get in contact, when I synced up with you. If they're interested in chatting or things like that, we want to kind of foster that community a bit more. All right, folks are trickling in, so let's give it a couple of minutes. Please send again.
What do you, Brendan?
Honoring, hey, Matthew. All right, we'll give a couple more minutes. Looks like looks like folks are still trickling in, so let's wait a bit. I posted the the meeting notes in the chat, so please fill out your name and the attendance.
And then we have a nickname, please make sure you put it in your display names, too.
Do you have one address?
It'd be it'd be shadowed by the one that's on screen.
Zoom lets you change your name without rejoining, so.
That's a rename button on the the ellipses, and you click on that on your name. I don't know, maybe I'm gonna try it.
Yeah, you have to do it from the chat screen.
Yep, looks like it's it does this book. I don't think it's persistent, though, I'm guessing. Yeah, that's wait another minute.
Emily.
Erin.
Hey. Hello, everyone.
Okay, let's get started. I'm gonna paste the the drive link again, just for those that just joined in. So in the setup of the usual script. So, hey, everyone. So a quick reminder that the meetings are called it and it's going to be uploaded after the meeting. Obviously, the the CNCF and the code of conduct applies to these meetings. We need at least one person to volunteer describe if someone can do that, that would be great. And thanks for filling up your names. And if you can, please also add the your affiliation or maybe the companies or communities that you work with. This helps us kind of get in contact with the right people and kind of form different working groups together. Thanks, Emily, for volunteering to start. Cool. So before we go ahead, I want to just go through to see whether we have any new members, do any introductions. Do you have any new members today? Okay, looks like no new members today. Thanks, interest as well for streaming. So one thing that we've added to the weekly meetings is a tree section. So what we're gonna do is at the start of every weekly meeting, there's a working session. We are going to go through a couple of issues and kind of talk a little bit about them. Let people know that we are looking at this issue issues either to, you know, close them or to follow up on them. And so the idea is to give a general overview, some chart discussion around them. And then these will be posted, the section as well to get additional feedback. And for example, if the decision is to make to close this issues at the end of the week, we will close all these issues. So this is still, this is still very new, so we will see how this turns out. So I'm gonna share my screen quickly. If I can, this is the right. Cool. I think that's the right one. I'm gonna paste the issues that we're looking at today. Sorry, I'm gonna paste in the script notes. But so first one that we're gonna kind of take a quick look at is issue sixty. Scoping recommendation for compliance and vulnerability elements applied to cloud native infrastructure. The the whole idea around this issue was kind of to create some some knowledge or some kind of paper around compliance and things like that. So there's some details about, you know, people talking about compliance. There was a draft document. And so keep in mind this stock this this issue is from twenty eighty. So there's, you know, initial things about small recommendations here and there. And talking about what compliance is. But I think that some of the elements of this have already been covered by the white paper. And so we want to get some feedback. Probably by the next chair cycle, so next week, if there isn't any additional concerns, but the there are other things that are not covered by the scope of this issue. That we will close it in favor of saying that, you know, all these elements are already covered by the part paper. So this is the first issue that we want to look at. So sixty.
So before we move on to the next issue, could we just close that and say if somebody has any, if there's any specific things that aren't covered in the white paper? Open another issue or do a direct PR so that we could end up with specific issues that would be like closing it without. You know, and giving somebody a possible action rather than leaving it open.
Yeah, I think I think what's we want to just collect all the issues here and then we decide what the the next.
Okay, so you're gonna present all the issues and then we're gonna talk about them? Is that what you're?
Oh, well, so I don't want to limit the discussion just to the meeting. So I kind of want to just shed some light. I'm gonna post all these issues as well on the sec channel. So at the end of this this section, if we have some time at the end of the ten minutes, we can talk about some of these specific things. But in general, I'll collect all the comments on the GitHub issues themselves. All right, so this one was opened by Mark Underwood. This was use cases for interoperability. The idea is to add additional text to the use cases and personas section to talk about interoperability of certain certain frameworks and certain tools. So this is more of something that was proposed. There really hasn't been on that much what being put into it yet. So because this is a very old issue and it's inactive, we will probably close this if there's no interest to further to this.
Too hard to do, too.
Sorry. Sorry, Mark, I missed you. What did you say?
I said, too hard to do.
Okay, well, if, I mean, we're gonna close it, but obviously, like, if 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 this comes up again, and we get we get a bit more. We get a couple of people that are interested in working on it, you know, we can open a new issue.
You can, I don't know, you want to move it, we could move it over to the public sector stuff because it's germane to that, but we don't have a separate repo for that, so. Maybe you just close it and tag it as something to put in the public sector slack channel.
Okay, can you? Can you do that? Because I'm not sure if your section, I don't really talk about, or maybe just send me a link to this section.
Yeah, yeah, I'll put that here in a second. Just give me a minute.
Awesome. Yeah, if this can continue in the space, that that would be great as well.
The two issues you've gone over so far, it sounds like there's not enough information to triage because they're open ended and they need more information.
Yeah, I think that the main thing for these issues is say. The if I either been lost in space and we want to kind of bring them forward again to see whether the people that are interested and working on on them or interested in discussing them. If not, you know, we want to kind of clean up the issues a little bit more.
Yeah, and I think the the key thing is the, in my opinion, the reason they're not scoped is because we don't have somebody who's passionate about taking it forward and doing that work like either because, you know, that, you know, at any one time, we have way more than we could possibly do. You know, towards cloud native security. So so we tend to prioritize things that people are like eager to work on or are specific directive from the technical oversight committee. So these are just, they didn't fall into one of those categories.
Hector. I'm sped balling here, but if the issue's been open for three years, would it be fair to say that we no longer have the context for why it would have been relevant at the time? And maybe we have a rule that issues that have been inactive for two years get automatically closed.
Well, that's that's what this this thing is about to just kind of bring it up again, kind of like any last words. If not, we're gonna send it away. We're gonna bring it to the.
Yeah, so we're, we don't want to just automatically close thing because they happen to be old. We want to like have a process where we we actually collaboratively do something with something before we just close it.
That's true.
So can we have a process to automatically flag for possible review of this process?
Also, we we have a bot that maps inactive label if no activity has been done on the issue for more than, I think, sixty days. So that's kind of what part of what the triage team is doing, right? It's kind of, they're gonna look at all the inactive labels and if it's fairly recent, maybe we'll paint the art of the the issue and try and get some follow up. And if, you know, we've seen that multiple attempts to follow ups have been made, or this issue is really, really old, then we bring it, we bring it to this discussion to say that. Any take us if not, if not, we should close this. I hope that's what you were thinking, Frederick.
Yeah, that that makes sense. Sounds like there's, it sounds like the team's already on it.
There's also another issue, which is an actual review of the triage process. So if it was a question of the review of the process, there's an open issue on that as well.
Yeah, yeah, we be, I think we have a topic on the agenda to chat about that quickly. Okay, so this one validate personas and use cases. This was kind of being able to get feedback from the C N C F community on the things we've written with the use cases and personas to get more feedback to see whether there are more things that we need to be able to add to them. So the idea of this was to have a survey and to get some feedback on that.
Yeah, and actually, at the time, I'll just add a little color because I wrote this up. And then I'll stop talking for a little while. So the idea was to get actual user researchers involved in like either interviews or surveys or constructing something that would validate the work product of the group. But then we didn't end up being able to find those people or the people who we found weren't able to, you know, follow through. So so, yeah. I think that we just don't have the band, we don't have the people for this or haven't historically. Somebody wants to, I think, I still think it's a great idea. But but, yeah, we need the folks to do it.
Yeah, so one thing, one quick update on this particular issue is actually so Katie. And Katie Minders, I'm guessing, I don't know how you pronounce that. Actually, they got in touch with us and they've drafted a survey for cloud native security. So the question is kind of, there is some overlap on these things, but not exactly, you know, we're not collecting demographics of of members in the community and things like that. But, yeah, so there is like an ongoing effort. This probably will be created as a separate issue to kind of look at the results from. But, yeah, I think if if we don't have any bandwidth for this, you're probably end up posting this issue.
So I to bring you back off of what Brandon said, so that survey has a lot of this information and it, to a certain extent, it's collecting real information, not necessarily industry experience, but what industry that they're currently in. Country, a few other data points, but a lot of the cloud native survey is designed around kind of validating the work that the group is doing and and understanding whether or not our products that we're outputting are consumable to the community in a manner that they're expecting them to be. So my recommendation would be to close this issue, raise a new one to go through the results of that survey when it becomes available to us and link this issue to the new one to be able to provide that as a product out.
Yep. Now, the key word is is validate because we do have defined personas, right? Assessments, make use of those when we, if you book, we took those.
At the time that this was written, that was the only work product of the group. And the goal was to validate it. And our group was very small, so we had a lot less bandwidth than we do now, and C N C F was less than sure. So so, yeah, you're absolutely right. The keyword is validate, not create new product. I mean, except for that, the survey is sort of a product, but you know what I mean?
Yeah, now presumably, it's been it's been validated, it's been tried and tested since then in a number of occasions.
Only within our group, not from our audience that is like beyond the group. So we validated it in that we use it for different, you know, for assessments and whatnot. But that doesn't mean that it's useful generally to people who are coming to cloud. You know, there's a whole range of people who are not represented within our group.
Yeah, and also I think the the only feedback we get are from those that use it and then come back to us. And we don't have a lot of information of anyone that uses it, but doesn't necessarily participate actively.
Now, we do we anticipate there's going to be like high impact from that? Like, what would be the return on this product, on validation of that product?
I think the the idea would be, do we have to, do we have to refine it or do we have to change it? Or is there something to should we broaden the scope of the the use cases and personas? I think the idea is like, should we spend more time investing into it? Or do we have to spend more time investing into it? How is it finance this?
That's fair. My God tells me we might be splitting hairs at this point. And and people are leveraging it and they're not finding any objections with it. So it's not broken, but sure.
Yeah, generally, things that are three years old aren't that broken, or we would have fixed them by now. So, yeah, I think that I would concur.
All right, sweet.
Cool. So I I think this is kind of the the idea of this tree I sections is kind of a couple of issues. I have five lined up, but it seems like I don't want to dive too deep into issues we so mentioned the items today.
Maybe you won't want to throw a DevSecOps person into into the personas. I'm sorry, Brandon.
Well, and just to create a PR. I'm sorry.
Zero trust implementation engineers not captured there.
Yeah, we we call it, we got to create jobs for ourselves, right? That's one way to do it. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead with the other follow up agenda, things on the agenda. So review of other the the tech meetings, the APEC meetings. Do we have anyone that went to that? Oh, I think that was last week, so we shouldn't have any updates this week, so I'm gonna skip that. T O C meeting updates. Matthew, are you there?
Hey, yeah. From the T O C meeting the other week, I believe Emily was present and handled everything. S, do we call it stag or S tag, by the way?
When we talk to the talk, it's security tag. Informally, we can say stag.
Okay, there's a, there's a Harry Potter joke in there, but that's beneath me. Um, I'll, uh. So I believe Emily already took care of everything on that front, and I took notes slash screen caps of the remaining pieces there, but it's pretty much like a a wall of text. So if you guys want, I can just go put that in the notes there because otherwise I'd pretty much be sort of rote repeating a dozen or so slides of text.
Okay, sounds like just a regular update, then.
Yeah, I I don't have anything to really add on that front. And then I also have a short check in, and I'll have to get out of the way in the next ten minutes before I head out, but that's relating to just two other assessments. So no other updates for me with respect to T O C.
Cool. All right, any updates from partner groups?
What are partner groups?
Of some like Paul, the policy working group, the supply chain working group.
So I can speak to the health see working group Robert is here as well. We started a working session on the white paper that we are working on. We had an initial meeting and we're meeting again tomorrow to discuss progress and what all we need to cover there.
Awesome.
Thank you.
All right, I thought let's go to supply chain working group. Any updates from that?
I know, sure. So for the supply chain working group, we're currently breaking apart our user stories on our Trello board to help refine some of the requirements for the reference architecture. We're hoping to have that wrapped up in the next week, week and a half. And then from there, we can start assigning engineers to create some task for work.
Awesome. Cool. I think that's all we have for now. Let's just go through general standups. You know, let's see who, but anyone has update. Emily, an update, but are you covering that in the agenda or do you want to just do that as an update?
So just a quick reminder, not related to the triage discussion on the agenda item for PRs, we actively encourage everybody in the community to review PRs. It helps the security leadership team out by having another set of eyes go over everything, just to make sure that we're not missing stuff. But also to give us the assurance that indeed somebody else did look at it, that is not the author. Makes it easier for us to go ahead and merge content in and make sure that the repo is up to date and relevant. The other update that I have is there's an open issue regarding security resources being available to projects that come to us or that are looking for them. That's posted in the channel, so if you're interested, please comment. That's it.
Awesome. Thanks, Emily. Pushka, do you have something?
It's part of the agenda, so I'll let others speak first.
Cool. All right, next update is from Matthew.
There we go. So two quick updates. One is with respect to build packs. The I put in my assessment there and I just have to make a copy of it in the Google Doc self assessment rather than the copy I put in Slack for tracking slash history slash completeness. And I'm just picking Robert right now to see if there's anything proactively, we have to sort of drive or push through the pipeline or any sort of gears to set in motion, or if that's the onus is on the build pack team, or if we should just give them a little heads up. And then on Cloud Custodian, we met up with the maintainers a couple of days ago. Robert, myself, Emily, you, some others, and just went through essentially some of the questions I brought up in my own review. And I put together the joint assessments that Robert's putting up in Google Docs now. And then we just have to schedule, I guess, time to just sort of assign pieces for everyone to populate in that document to own. And then from that point, I believe we'll move on to the more hands on part of the assessment, sort of the what was it called? The bench top testing, static testing of it and take it from there.
Awesome. Thanks.
Brendan, on that one, I don't know, I still can't edit that three or seven issue.
Yeah. I watch you maybe for now you have to talk to one of us. So so just, I think, just saying me on Ash, and then we will do updated for you. We are still trying to figure out what the good way to do it. Unfortunately, there's no way to kind of like dedicate permissions easily. So, yeah, we we are still figuring it out, but in the meantime, you have to bear bear with one of us do it for you.
Okay, I'll just send you a def and you can merge it in.
Sounds good. Okay, um, let's see, no dates and dress. You have an update?
A couple of things. Matthew, I'll work with you on reaching out to the build packs project lead to have a debrief, make sure there's no discrepancies between our findings, like the ones over they they gave to your to your report and we can we can write the capstone report to conclude the assessment. Thanks a lot for for all your help and getting us over the line. We strata a little bit there at the end. Besides that, as as we start to make progress on on the supply chain working group that Emily's doing a great work. One area that I have a lot of uncertainty around is signing and verification and like state of projects and that. I think the notary V two group is is attempting to overhaul their their governance. So something to to keep an eye on. I think the the folks behind in Toto, the folks behind six store are trying to structure things in a way that's conducive to work and outcomes. So, yeah, Marine, I don't know if you want to add anything to that. I think like the team expects to have some changes occur within the next month or so. But, yeah, I just wanted to raise that for visibility and awareness.
Yeah, definitely. I think there's a lot of potential in in all of those projects you mentioned to have some solutions in this space. Yeah, definitely. I think there's a lot of potential in in all of those projects you mentioned to have some solutions in this space, which is pretty exciting. But I think all of them have a little ways to go before before they're there. You know, so so that's just kind of the way it is. Because like, you know, trying to achieve kind of, you know, uh, but but the well-defined threat model and figure out what this, what's problem the signatures are solving. I think is a really key step there. That's definitely still kind of an ongoing process. So if anyone's interested in that or wants a particular thing out of signature, many of these projects. I think this would be a great time for anyone to go and communicate that to folks, that we make sure that whatever solutions they come up with are the thing, are solving the right problems, basically.
Just to add more color, the like the one project or while the one effort, I wouldn't call it a project necessarily that people have looked as the candidate for a C N C F or under the C N C F umbrella, doesn't have a threat model and doesn't have a whole lot of of code for it other than proposals. That is not really me too, right? So think a lot of the, a lot of the concerns step from there. But you're attempting to to bridge that gap, right?
Yeah, exactly. And try and um basically by by defining that stuff better. And so, yeah, the process is definitely going to still take some time. I think that's that's kind of the the main takeaway. But I think eventually it'll come up with with something that can that can deal with this, as long as we figure out what those goals actually are and what what the solutions are solving for it are. Yeah.
Uh, Frederick, you you have your hand up. Do you wanna add something?
Yeah, it's more of a question. Is there a place where 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 we have these projects listed? Or a place where we can keep track of some of the uh extremely high level things that they're that they're working on? Because I think it'd be, one of the problems that that I that I'm seeing within this particular space is that there's a proliferation of different approaches and projects. And the the people working on them are doing an an amazing job into uh working with each other and communicating with each other. But if you have somebody new who's coming in uh who doesn't understand the the space, it's it's incredibly high bar for them to to even work out where should they focus their time.
That's a, that's a good question, Frederick. Um, so I'm gonna do a quick um page file and call me to security map here. So so um and then probably interesting, we're in a can cat onto this. We're trying to to kind of consolidate this not only for like supply chain signing stuff, provenance of S bomb stuff. But in general, for all of cloud native. Um, so that's what the I P C link, which is the current built of um the 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 cognitive security map. So this uh they basically we have all the different projects for the different areas of security. Um, so this is like um an effort from the tech to do this. Uh, but I'm not sure, but that that there is also an effort from um the side of the projects.
Is there a place I can do a pull request?
I would recommend uh that this potentially be brought up with the talk at one of the talk meetings is a potential concern area as as we identify gaps within the cloud native security ecosystem or cloud native ecosystem proper. Understanding what some of these challenges are and which projects are working with which other projects to have them resolved would be beneficial for the larger community to be aware of, at least to know where to go to get involved. The cloud native security map certainly has a lot of that content and can increase the visibility of those gaps. But I think there should be a higher level of visibility for it.
Yeah, so I think that one of the, one of the next steps, I think we we have an issue somewhere open. I think probably like a year ago on this. Uh, the plan was to finish up the map and then kind of like evaluate the map and take a look at the gaps there. But there seems to be some kind of other, it seems to be a lot of knowledge that's lying around there. I think we should kind of take note off. So maybe we'll make that one of the next projects coming up. We'll get the group together to discuss this and bring up some ideas um for iteration of what some recommendations that the T O C can do.
I think you're getting at what the what the ultimate goal is, which is arrive at standardization. We we care about having a a standard for this format that gets used across the board. Because there's, there's many, many different approaches and and there's, it's a disservice to the community to like make a king out of one that's not complete yet. And well, if we're gonna put all hands on deck, because like we think we have the brightest minds with the most experience like work through all the security aspects uh captured and put this out and we get, we get container D to use it. We use like gatekeeper to be aware of this, be able to admission control based on on these things. Then we can get to this place where we actually make meaningful use of signatures.
Yep. So, um. So Frederick, I I posted in the the branch that we have other content. You can make a pull request directly on that to update the map. Um, and yeah, we should continue the signing discussion at some point. Um, we are running a bit tight on time, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna move forward the agenda a little bit. Okay, so I think the last update we have is uh Frederick on the security controls.
Okay, so short update on that. So um Alex had taken on the initial setup of the of the group to get us all started. Alex Barbato, I think was how to pronounce it. And so the idea was for the first month that he drives it. Uh, we've gone through that. We've had the initial setup, which I think went really well with initial populated spreadsheet. Uh, that spreadsheet is uh is available for people of you. It should be linked in the Slack. If you want to take a look at that, they can, they can see it. We're moving on to the next phase, which is going to be, we'll we'll select a uh new person to drive the next stage of what's going on. And once we have some uh scope on what the next steps that we want to take on it are, then we're gonna start doing callouts for more people to volunteer to participate. So just want to put that status down for the security controls group. Uh, thanks.
Awesome. Thanks, Frederick. All right, um, so let's get to the agenda items today. So we have the first one, which is discussing cloud native security uh survey, survey results. I think this is from the um the white paper survey, right?
Yes.
Okay. Right, Pushka and Emily.
Okay, all right, uh, I'll share my screen. Emily, feel free to interrupt and add more color to whatever I'm sharing. Uh, and let, I'm sharing on a bigger screen, so let me know if this is the text is too small for everyone.
That's fine.
That a little bit.
Okay. Maybe this is better. All right.
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, so I'll just give some brief context and history behind this. Uh, last year we published a security white paper with work from many of the people who are in the call and some who are not. As part of that, we got good feedback. Uh, it was shared, we think, uh, across the board everywhere. Uh, but we wanted to validate that understanding and see if we are really by spending so much effort and time on the white paper doing justice to the community and solving things and sharing knowledge that is useful for them. So we we started tracking that through uh issue, which we called as retrospective. And part of that was creating a survey and sharing it across the the community with ten questions that not only are related to white paper, but also about cloud native security in general uh and see what feedback we are getting. So we published the survey in February, I I wanna say, and then we closed it early last month. So after that, we started compiling the results. We got good help from C N C F as well. Amy especially helped a lot. And uh we were finally able to compile the results. There were about seventy plus participants and a P R with some of the details is open. Uh, we also have a new contributor who participated in cricket, creating a summary. George, I think is stay there in the call today. So thank you, George, for this. So what I want to do is uh share the summary and the results and the graph. And based based on that, get feedback from all of you in terms of whether this makes sense. What are the possible next steps we should be working on? Are there any projects coming out of this? What updates would we want to make to the white paper? Who would be interested in all of that? Anything else you would add before we dive deep, Emily?
No, um, other than just folks that are really interested in this, there's a lot of great content that came out of the survey. We're hoping to take advantage of. So I encourage everyone to take a few minutes, read through the P R. It's linked in the notes as well as um displayed here and comment on the issue with anything that you think might provide value as next steps or how we can provide a a meaningful and significant update to the paper. Smaller changes are not not usually an issue. We can make them on the fly. But if it's a larger scale change, we'd like to actually put some more effort around them.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. So we have a brief summary and some anecdotal feedback. Uh, I think the summary probably is self-explanatory if we go through the graphs one by one. So I will start with this one. So the idea was to get the idea about who are responding to the questionnaire or the survey, and it seems like fairly were equal distribution among uh people who are engineers, architects and then developers. And there were a few who were VP or engineering leadership or C suit who responded. In terms of uh people who have worked, seems like three to five years uh had a greater majority of people who who were part of the respondents. Uh, five plus years was interesting because cloud native as a whole became really popular about six, seven years ago. So so then that that was interesting to me. And what probably we is a good reflection of how we are sharing the survey or the white paper is that the beginners are not getting the links and the communication that we are sending. So this can be seen by maybe people who are new to the community, not being able to participate in the survey or being the least when quite significantly at that. Uh, another thing we found was we definitely missed out on the options in the survey here where there were a lot of people who selected other instead of the four things that we had pointed out. And some of the examples that people put in other a box was in insurance company, in a tech company in uh Silicon Valley and some 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 other uh in- interesting uh categories. So probably if we continue the survey next time, we'll have better set of options. This one was very interesting and I'll tie this back to another question after this. Uh, so vulnerability management and secrets management was the most selected answer. And instead of what I thought would be the most selected, which is supply chain security. And and the only way I could think of why that would be the case is probably because we are spending so much time, effort and communication on supply chain security. People are maybe thinking that, oh, they they are already doing a good job. We have, we know enough, but maybe we are not doing enough on these two things. So that's probably the reason I could think of why these results are the way they are.
Also, Pushka, it could be up there's perspective, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about vulnerabilities and secrets management.
That's true. Yeah, yeah, that's true. I guess that the this kind of first question ties with this one. Uh, this one was uh also not surprising for me, uh, where the most number of people responded would prefer not to disclose. Uh, even though the survey was anonymous for for people who were not following earlier. Uh, and then the other ones after that were vulnerability exploited or cryptocurrency miners, which is fairly well-known by now. Uh, and ransomware was there, even though maybe we missed the timing probably because ransomwares have grown in number and uh prevalence quite uh quite more than when the survey was released. So probably this number may have been higher. It it also maybe means that in cloud native environments, ransomware impact has been lesser compared to other environments. So the next one was uh cloud native security skills. So basically, the answer was we want everything. Uh, and uh which is, which is hard to do and it it only tells us that there cannot be one single person who is responsible for cloud native security in your company. There has to be a team which which makes sense and maybe each of them can be responsible for all of these options. The other one was which of the tools you currently use. So this ties back to the other question where people were saying we need vulnerability management and we are worried about that the most. At the same time, they are also saying that we use image science scanning more than any other control that we have. So what probably that means is people are doing a scan, but they are not able to action on it or not able to make use of the results. And as a result of that, maybe the vulnerabilities are detected, but they remain unmitigated. So that's something that maybe as a community, we can help out on. Next one was uh how much of the white paper you have read, uh, which was probably the question, one question I was very interested in. And it looks like there were people who did not know about the paper the most and or have read very little because of the size. And then there were a few people who have read fairly uh almost hundred percent of the paper. What also made sense is when people said N A, because some people basically were saying like, what white paper? We have not even heard about that. And that ties to the next question where we asked, how did you find out about the white paper? And the highest number of answers we got was I found out about the white paper through this survey, which which means that we're not communicating it as well as we communicated the survey. And we need to really assess like what is the best way to reach out to people. And the next one was the blogs and the social medias, uh, which seems like was thirty plus percent, which means they are working, but we need to do more. And then the last one was, how would you like the cloud native security? What would you like the cloud native security to focus on? So it seemed like the number one, which is almost, I would say eighty-six percent is secure by default or security falls in the projects. So what that also means is people don't want to spend time on security and they expect security to be part of the project rather than something that they would have to buy or bolt in. Uh, and then reference guide and automated tooling were next, which makes sense and also seems like uh something that we are helping a bit through different white papers of serverless supply chain and the cloud native security. Uh, so these were ten questions and there was some very interesting anecdotal feedback mostly by one single respondent. So I would take it with a grain of salt, because that particular user could be respondent, could be very opinionated. But I want to pause here and hear thoughts and questions and comments from everyone.
So Pushka, on the last question, you had secure defaults. What does that mean? Like publish default configurations? I mean, every deployment is different, right? And platform is different.
I'm guessing it's something like C I S benchmarks, maybe.
Also, maybe taking the secure option by default. So when you deploy out of the box, if you don't change anything, it's the secure version.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I understood as well.
Yeah, so this is a big conflict with the um many of the projects want easy development by default. And so that's in conflict with people who are like, yeah, but don't give me a bucket of bits. Like as a developer, I would rather have we have default security for this scenario and I can figure out whether my scenario, how it differs from that scenario rather than what is typically presented to me, which is everything's different. You decide. And I'm like, I don't know your product. Do must I really learn the definition of every single field? There's gotta be other people like me, right? Give me something and I can do diffs from that rather than making me learn every single thing in your product just to make it secure.
Yeah, I think.
Is it also possible that maybe this means the folks are looking for something that is somewhat automated? Meaning, you know, they don't need to configure, they don't need to find out, but the security uh solution is such that it will adapt itself to the environment that has been deployed on that project. And it comes natively with any uh product that people are trying to sell under the cloud environment. Is that, is that any, is that a kind of sentiment might be reflected there? Anybody has any opinion?
That's possible, but that's a more um.
That's possible, but that's a more, um, sophisticated capability, right? So that, that requires a project to be able to understand its surroundings, that'd be great if you could do it. But, um, like the examples I usually come back to is like if you're dealing with T L S encryption, T L S or, or encryption. The defaults, um, uh, uh, algorithms which are selected. Should be secure, right? I shouldn't have to go and figure, okay, what's the best one to use in twenty twenty-one, it's whatever tool I'm using should be able to tell me. That's what that is.
Exactly.
So in the interest of time, I think that this is something that we should schedule another meeting to talk through a little bit more about like. Secure defaults and what does that mean to us and what kinds of things that we could potentially look at? There's a lot of opinions in this space, there's a lot of evidence about what does and doesn't work and it kind of marries up a, um, more with what our use. What our users are expecting and the different roles and personas that they take on.
Yeah, yeah, I think I agree that, that will really help because I, I'm sure all of us have gone through this problem where somebody is asking for security. For somebody asking for better user experience, so definitely worth the breaking out for a separate meeting. One thing I wanted to pitch the chairs and get their feedback was, is this worth sharing with? Uh, T O C in one of their meetings, because maybe one way when they choose sandbox projects. As an example, well, maybe they could think about if they have a choice which is equal, but one is more. A call, security conscious or has more security falls, is that something they would pick? Or maybe they just for general visibility or perspective also, it might be helpful, what do you think?
Yeah, I, I, I think that that probably is. Not so much on the sandbox side, maybe on the like graduation, there can be a bit more emphasis on that. Um, but it seems like they will come back to us for that recommendation as well, so it could be part of the, maybe. Uh, could we better be part of like the joint review? To have, have that as like, uh, uh, effect that's a charm in on.
I see, so. If I understand correctly, is, is there some kind of a joint review that happens between D O C and this, uh, attack? I'm maybe missing some context.
Well, this, this would be usually when a project goes up for incubation or graduation, uh, there is a recommendation that's asked from the tag. Um, and for us, it comes as a security recommendation, this usually is, uh, usually a result of. The security assessments that we do.
Right, okay.
Um, yeah, but, uh, like Emily mentioned in the chat, we do have a awesome meeting and we have the, the updates, the T O C. So I think this is definitely something that, that we should share with them at one of our next T O C updates.
Okay, sounds good.
Cool, um, can, can you create a issue on the discussion of security faults? And maybe we can, we can pick up the discussion, not time, okay, have someone that would like to present on that topic. And then we can have a discussion around that.
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
Awesome, thanks, Pushkar. Cool, um, we don't have that much time left, so go to the last two topics, uh, pretty straightforward, I think. Uh, the first one is on the triage team, so, so we saw a little bit about the new changes with the triage, um. Uh, in this meeting, so what we are trying to form is, uh, we're trying to find a triage lead. Uh, they can be the triage efforts, uh, we look, we are having triage meetings every once every two weeks for now, for now, they are in person meetings. Uh, and then we will figure out a better way so that, you know, those that may not be able to get to the meetings can also participate. Um, but not the triage, we are looking to form a triage team, we're looking for triage leads, um, there is an issue number. Which is, um. Six, six, five, the piece in the chat here. Yes, Emma, yeah, like Emily said, this one right after this. Uh, so you wanna drop by, uh, I will also put, uh, I will put the. The link to the Google Meet in, or the Zoom link in the Slack channel, tech security triage. So if you're interested, please join the section as well. Yeah, so what we're gonna go through usually at these meetings is, you know, initially to, to get everyone on the same page, to talk about, about how we are triaging things. How to group, how identify things to work on, how we identify things that, um. Like whether we should maybe, um, merge certain issues together, or we should redirect certain issues and, you know, which. Parties we should talk to and getting people together. So that's all part of the triage process, so if this is something that's interesting to you, um, please. Uh, put a note in the, the issue as well as join the, um, the tech security, um, triage section. And I'll put a link in there right after this. Okay, if not, I think the last, the last agenda item we have is from right now, yeah, I think that's all.
I have a couple of things, um, Brandon, um, the first one is, um. Let me open my. Yeah, the first one is the serverless security white paper, so, um, this is call for action for everyone, uh, and request. And if you're interested, please tag yourself to the issue, I know we had some hiccups in setting up an initial meeting because of time zones. Uh, some of our project leads are unable to attend the U S time zones, but, um, Andrew is working on. Setting up a brand new kickoff meeting, so if you're interested, please, please, um, send your contact information to them on the. Serverless, uh, security slot channel, um. Right now, as we see, we have only two volunteers to work on it, so help needed, uh, please participate and. And provide your information so we can invite you to the discussions. Uh, second one is Q's engineering update, um, so the working group has started actively working on the white paper, we had an initial meeting. There are a number of tags participating in that, uh, for now, I am attending those meetings and contributing, so if anyone from this team. Is interested in participating, please tag yourself to the issue and I can forward, um, the slide channel information as well as. Uh, the project teams' white paper where you can start contributing to that as well. Any interest? You can ping me also directly and I'll help you connect with the right resources there.
Yeah, if you put in the, the issue number after the meeting as well, um, that would, that would be helpful.
Sure, I will, um, and in the issue itself, I provided the slot channel there as well, so. I'm happy to do that, Brandon, and the last one is the, it's a new initiative, uh, about attack. Matrix for cloud native technologies, I know MITRE has come out with one, Microsoft has come out with one. Um, just wanted to know if we need to do any work here or if there's any interest in progressing that to like kill chain. Uh, identification and, you know, I know we have controls, right? Nobody puts all the control, layered controls that we have, um, recommended, but. Based on the attack scenarios, if we can figure out if you have A, B or C controls, then you can kill this attack completely and you are protected. Um, I don't know if it makes sense, but this was just an idea and looking for feedback here from everyone. How we can progress on this journey to improve guidance on. The attack surface management, um, this is more for our detection and response teams, right? Uh, so that they can leverage this as well as to where to go look, today's soft teams are challenged as to how they can. Manage the attack surface in a cloud native world, um, and the goal is to provide them more guidance and information on. This is where you start looking and this is how you kill these type of attacks. And this, this, these are the data points you need to gather or correlate to even identify these attacks. Silence.
Uh, Marcus, there's something, I know, I know, Mark, you've talked a little bit about the, the.
Always over the book, sorry.
Uh, yeah, we're talking about the, the, the MITRE trend, trend matrix and stuff like that.
Okay, those were the three issues I wanted to talk about, um. I mean, again, we wanna do work that everybody's interested in, um, if we don't have any interest, then we obviously can prioritize it accordingly in our roadmap.
Yeah, let's, let's put the issues, if you can, uh, put them in the Google Doc, they'll be helpful. Uh, and then also, let's, let's put, uh, these out in the tax security channel as well, so that people have visibility. That may not necessarily be able to make it for the beating.
Sounds good, right, awesome, thank you.
Awesome, so we have three minutes left, um, and you know what's for anyone? Our jokes.
Um, just that, um, I wanted to draw your attention to the chat, um, there was a question about, uh, when we're actually doing, like, so we, we started. Last quarter doing a quarterly roadmap meeting, it's on the planned. Agenda, planned meetings list, but without a date, does that mean that the next working meeting will be a roadmap discussion?
Yes, it's July twenty-eighth.
Alright.
I expect to see everybody there.
Awesome.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you, everyone.
And I got sidetracked, July twenty-eight, where?
Right here.
Right here.
Same time, same channel.
It's my birthday that day, so I'm gonna be having some cake instead.
No, we're gonna celebrate your birthday.
Would be your birthday present.
Yeah, happy birthday, Andres, for reviewing the roadmap, get excited.
Yeah, well, let me add the agenda item for both these on right now, so we don't look.
Are you gonna, are you gonna sing me a song, Brandon?
Maybe, maybe, if you make it to the meeting, maybe.
We can have a group as singing on Zoom is really awful, but maybe somebody with a great voice will volunteer.
Hey, the, the upload to YouTube is supposed to happen automatically now, I know there's some kinks with that, but.
Alright, awesome, good to see everyone.
Bye.
We, we have, uh, we have a presentation next week, uh, by the way, um, so that will be next week's meeting, we have a presentation on a new project. Um, more details will be posted on the channel.
Cool.